I don't know if drilling or maybe the two feet down, but I don't know. I'm not sure. We can work out some recommendations.
Kathy.
Kathy.
Kathy. And Kathy, we mentioned that you asked them and she threw up two in a reasonable amount. Can two at that end, you can deliver an annual loon? And then, it doesn't seem like we sampled the loon itself enough either one.
Was that, let me ask you, is that a decision we need to make tonight? As far as exactly where? Can we just basically commission GHD to do more testing?
Subject to Ryan.
I would say we don't have to do anything tonight. Ask your engineers to go back and do some planning and some looking at if you're going to do more testing, where does it make sense to do? Present a plan to you at a future meeting to look at. And that's all you can do tonight. And then, at some future meeting, you can either approve or ask them to revise whatever plan they come up with.
You can be premature to feed some of this information to our environmental commission.
Well, they're going to, they're meeting tomorrow night and they're going to go over their.
Oh, they are going to look, yeah.
Yeah, they're going to have this report to go over tomorrow night.
Will GHD be there?
GHD is not going to be available to be there. She cannot be available tomorrow night. That's why, that's why I invited, hold on. That's why I invited the environmental commission to come tonight. So, she's available, the environmental commission, Mr. Wolfgang's here to go over any questions that he may have tonight.
Well, what about rescheduling the meeting when she's available? So that the environmental commission has the benefit of having a conversation with her?
Well, I asked the environmental commission to come tonight.
Tonight's not conducive to a conversation about a sampling plan.
Well, like I said, we can work on that, we can work on that afterwards. There are GHD, the board, and the environmental. So, yeah, we'll, we'll work on that with, play us a, with GHD. So, well, then moving forward, we will ask GHD that motion, do we, Brian? So.
Not before public comments, please. No, no votes on this before public comments, please. You just dropped the report last, last meeting, sir.
Okay. You can have your public comments at the end, so we'll.
Before a vote, please.
We're not voting. So, we're gonna, we're gonna do more testing, okay?
Would like public comments before any decision is made to do testing or how to do it or plans.
That's at the end, that's at the end of the meeting.
Understood.
Okay. So, we will ask for further testing with GHD. So, moving forward on that, streetlight charge.
Mr. Allen's raising his hand if you are.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Could I ask Kathy a question?
Absolutely, Kathy.
Okay. When the sampling was done, was it done at various times of the year because migration of chemicals and stuff is different in the spring when it's really wet and all this snow's melting and so on versus maybe like late summer when it's real dry? Have they spaced out?
This, this is just straightforward site characterization soil testing. So, initial testing was done, I believe, in July or August, with supplemental testing then all the way into October. So, between July and October, there were three rounds of sampling that was needed. And again, it's soil testing. So, what's in your soil is, you're going to have residuals. And again, it wasn't, concentrations were very, very low all across the country. I've seen significant variation.
You invited us here to get more information. We had asked that Kathy come to our meeting. We've been discussing this for about five months. Mr. Guyven has been bringing information to us about the park and about the testing. Amy Witro was very kind to come with us to talk about the DEC, former DEC foreman who monitored the, this project when they had these disposal sites on that property. Kathy mentioned the pipe and how you have reports of what was in the pipe with the testing. The property itself, two feet, I, we don't believe, I'm talking about the environmental commission, two feet down is enough. I thank Mr. Jacoby for bringing it up. We have discussed it. We discussed the two sites that they covered, all right, when they had found the problems. They, they actually buried and then covered, all right? All we're saying is, if you're going to be doing this and you're very much concerned about the public, is two feet far enough? Some of the depth of the drilling went down eight feet. What was found in those places that there were eight feet down, all right? I don't have the report, so I can't tell you that. What's it, let me finish, please? If, if we were going to be concerned about the movement, as Jim just mentioned, about the movement down there out to the water, we know some of this has leaked into the water, all right? There was testing years ago on the water site, as you probably are aware, that the town did. And that arsenic chemical was involved in that because of farming. We're not sure what was put into that pile by, by DEC knows when they covered it up. Is there a report, what DEC has of what was there before? I don't, we don't know that, we haven't seen that. If DEC is, is involved, and I, I don't mean to say that DEC has accepted this report, it's been received and filed, has a representative of DEC spoken with the town concerning this project, all right? A current member, up to date, giving them information? Have they been asked that?
Yeah. Real quick, you've asked three questions, so before you ask a fourth and a fifth, do you want to address the first two?
And I made this one in there. As far as the depths of the sampling, every one of the 12 locations was sampled, we sampled the full vertical horizon, okay, from one to eight feet or one to eleven, depending on what the, what the final depth was. The only thing we found in those samples, as I say, was arsenic. And we went back then to ensure that the top two feet had no chemistry. That was the point, you know, that was the point of the characterization. We're not sampling two feet and two feet only, but like I said, we went back to those locations to ensure that the top two feet was clean after identifying or not identifying chemistry within the full vertical horizon.
Okay. And then you have a second question. Is, and I know, the third question's about the DEC, but was there, I don't know if we were.
Oh, was there a report? There were no reports. The agency has nothing on it.
From, yeah.
The only thing that they were able to provide to us was the loon construction drawings that were per, permit. They have no other documentation.
And that's in 1980 that you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay. And then the third question, we received a le, well, the third question is, we received a letter from DEC which was provided and filed by Donna Garfinkel, this filed here at the town, where they have basically no opinion, correct? They have no involvement. I don't have it in front of me, so I don't want to misquote. Do you have it?
I do. Give me a second. Okay. It's a letter, read, read. Letter dated February 5th, to Mr. Stephen Broder, Riverfront Park Site Characterization Report, January 2019. New York State Department of Environmental Conservation has received and reviewed the reference report. The data results indicate that this property would not qualify for the New York State Superfund Registry. If you have, please contact me at this number if you have any questions. Assigned by Stanley Radon, professional geologist, regional remediation geologist for New York State DEC Region 9.
And also, you had a conversation with the gentleman that Mr. Wolfgang's referring to who used to be with the DEC.
Mr. Greg Sutton.
Greg Sutton. And what was his response?
Mr. Sutton, we spoke to him about it. Kathy and I both had a conference call with him. And he is familiar with the site, okay? But said he was not on the site during the loon, during the loon construction, the watering, but he was at the wastewater treatment plant, which is very close to the site, of course, while we're seeing the construction of that project. So, he was not on the Riverfront Park.
So, he does not have firsthand knowledge on, on that?
That's right. That's, that's what his comment was, and he referred us to Stan Radon, who we have been working with, you know, throughout this process.
Okay. And, well, go ahead now. I want to get those questions answered before you move on.
I, I think the whole project needs to, to come to us, Kathy, and we would like to review that, all right? We have concerns. We do have an attorney on our, on our, on our commission, who I thought might, might be able to be here tonight, who had asked a lot of questions, and in fact, had asked me several times, and Mr. Guyven can, can vouch for this, to bring Mr. Sutton to our meeting, all right?
Kathy.
Mr. Sutton is not going to come to, you know, the environmental meeting. So, we were seeking information anytime we could get it, all right, beyond what Mr. Guyven was giving us. And we're very much concerned still with putting the public on the property without knowing exactly that there is nothing buried there that would harm them.
Right. So are we. And that's why we're going to ask for more testing. So, okay. Anybody else from the environmental wish to speak?
I went, just finished. We're still going to meet tomorrow night. That still doesn't solve the problem if you're going to be postponing the approval of this report. We still would like to have Kathy or Lannon or both to come to our meeting then next month. Or, we can create a special meeting to have them come when they're free.
Okay. Thank you. So, moving on, the streetlight charge, big vista, little vista, that would be, Muriel.
Yes, we got a testament for streetlight charge for big vista, little vista. It's 100 watt pressure sodium land. And I was talking about Mr. Lannon on that. And, Doc, you were saying that the street, portable streetlights that are not a pole, they don't have?
Yeah, there's some, like the, like the single model poles, they're, I've asked about the LED option and they, at the moment, they do not offer that. They do offer that, though on like the existing, like telephone poles, utility poles, they'll put an LED on that, but according to grid, they're not quite there yet with, with this particular pole, as odd as that may sound.
So, it's an annual cost of $283.39. We, for a motion on that, is that what we're doing tonight?
Well, if, if the board decides to move forward with the installation of the light, I would need to submit a certified resolution that the board passes, of course, back to National Grid, so they will then put it in their, in their pipeline to, to, for design and construction.
We have supervisor. I've been in favor of the streetlight from the beginning, but I would rather take no action on this than do it the old-fashioned way, when the new generation is coming up. I'd say you take no action right now, and let's wait for the new pole and the light.
What do you mean?
By night light, what you're talking about?
Well, to the better, brighter light, the else of the.
The National Grid doesn't offer that, so we'd have to wait for night light. That, that's dragging along, that's, we'd think, another, probably 16 months minimum.
But, but if, when we own all our streetlights and we go to install a streetlight there, is anything going to change? Will we be able to put an LED light in there?
Yeah, if you want to change a luminaire from high-pressure sodium to LED, and it's yours, that, that would be an option for you in the future.
So, it is available, if, not through National Grid, but it is available?
Yeah, it would be, yes, through the town.
But they would put up the pole regardless, so we want the pole.
Well.
What, what costs are we incurring because we're doing this?
$283.39 forever, every year.
So.
We'd have to buy it out. But if it comes to the point where the poles are ours, we would have to put up the light.
No, they won't be ours.
No.
Not the poles, the lights.
Yeah. Well, when, when we make that transition, we could change the bulb, basically.
The head.
Yeah.
The head of the lamp.
It's, I, I think we should put up as many people like they want. It's, it's not, it's not a huge cost factor.
Is he correct in that we can put a, this light up and change it later?
Yeah, what they would call is a change of luminaire. That's what they would do, change.
Okay.
You're going to have to buy this pole from National Grid.
National Grid.
Right.
Right.
They're not paying for it now.
It's a coach light, so it's not, it's not a Cobra.
Oh, I know that.
Like, like you remember, we pulled in the highway garage.
Yeah.
Last year, year before, and one legacy in Creek, you know, and that. So, so there's been various styles throughout the, you know, last several years that's been put in. This one is proposed to be identical to the one that's on big vista and little vista on, on the first intersection as you're coming off, off the ridge. This one is at the end.
When we buy it back from them, ultimately, will it cost us a lot of money to buy that pole?
You know, I'm not that familiar with the whole type of buyout program, to be honest with you. I know other towns have considered it and some are further ahead than others.
Yeah.
Well, here's what I can tell you. If you don't put the pole up now through grid, and then you do take action and you're now in the streetlight business, then it's going to be up to the town to put it, the pole. So, if you, if, that's one option. The other option is to, at grid, put it in now, or, or whenever you like, and then at some point in the future, should you take over the streetlights, then you have the option then to swap out the high-pressure sodium, which are ubiquitous throughout the town, and just swap it out with an LED luminaire.
Okay.
All right. I'll go for it.
Okay. So, motion approved as presented?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, then you'll come with a resolution?
Actually, this, that final resolution for this is all we'll need.
Okay.
For the town clerk.
Okay.
Kick that to grid and go put it, go put it in their, on their schedule.
Okay. Thank you.
Great.
The WPCC sludge de-watering improvement bits.
Apparently, there's been three projects with this de-watering improvement down the wastewater treatment plant. Would you like me to just kind of list the low bidder?
Sure, yeah, there's a, what, yeah, silence.
Apparently, there's, there's three contracts, one was with the general contractor, Quack Bush came in, had the lowest bid at $577,000 for heating and ventilation. John W. Danceforth came in as a low bidder at $64,300. And Ferguson Electric, where the electrical contract came in as a low bidder at $56,000, so you leave 700 in margin. And so, I believe we're probably going to make these motions individually.
Weird question, did you?
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead.
Steve, what happened was, in that lower left-hand corner on that sheet, $815,000, that was the engineer's estimate. And, so those, that figure didn't mean anything, that was just his estimate, so it's been substantially below.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that was a question that was raised earlier, so, and, okay.
So, make the motion to approve Quack Bush Company Incorporated as the general construction contractor for the sludge de-watering improvement, improvements to the Water Pollution Control Center.
Second.
I'm sorry, the amount of $577,000, apologize.
Second.
Motion second, any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Move to award John W. Danceforth the heating and ventilation contract for the sludge de-watering improvements for the Water Pollution Control Center.
Second.
At the amount of $64,300.
Second.
Motion second, any questions on the matter? All in favor?
Aye.
Move to award the electrical contract for the sludge de-watering improvements to the Water Pollution Control Center to Ferguson Electric at the amount of $56,700.
Second.
Motion second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And then Doc has some comments.
If I may, if I could ask the board to consider passing a resolution that allows the supervisor to execute those contracts, such as to a third-party approval?
I also favor a little bit of time.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just supervisor, for the record, do you want to state the funding is already in place? About where this is going?
Yeah, funding is for, is from H32, which is money that we had, uh, been through for upgrades.
Very good. Okay. Thank you very much. The WPCC Greater Buffalo Environmental Conference?
Jeff has asked, we sent four people to Greater Buffalo Environmental Conference on Tuesday, March 25th. Sorry, March 19th. The cost of $135 each, total of $540. Funds to come from SS1-811000400, that's open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sanborn Fire Company, who's some top board members, the Sanborn Fire Company Incorporated here with submits for active membership, the set fire company, the name of Caitlin Hoover, address 630 Hoover Road, Sanborn, New York, 14132. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then Chief Prentice, his generator issues. Chief?
We, unfortunately, when the power went out and school was dismissed, our generator kicked in as it was supposed to and did not transfer any of the power in. The power transfer switch, subsequently, we found out, has gone bad. We had somebody come out and take a look at it, and they said because of where it was originally installed, the conduit comes into the top of the box, it shouldn't be, it should be on the side, or the bottom, because all the water settles on the top. We had sealed it with silicone, water got in there, and we believe that's the culprit. The part alone was close to $5,000 or $6,000 to replace the power transfer switch. The generator is a $30,000 generator that we have that we got through grant money previously. And the problem that we have with that is, everybody was calling, actually, God called me, and Tim was trying to call. When we lose that, we lose our radios, we lose the phones, and we lose the power of the server. Server power backup is only about half an hour's worth. So, what I'm looking for is, I have one quote already from the, the one company. Problem that I'm having is that because it's a liquid-cooled industrial generator, if a number of people come out for a quote, and they could not give us a quote on it, because it has to be certified for that type of generator. So, talking to Mr. Seaman, what I'm looking to do is hopefully get the board's approval. I have the one quote, it's going to be around what they estimated, but I'm, I'm looking for, to replace the, the power transfer switch and to correct whatever the conduit to get it to the side or the bottom.
Generator's still good.
Generator's good. Generator has no problems at all, except for the power transfer switch.
Right, right.
So, what I'm looking to do is, to avoid having to do this at a two-week and perhaps, possibly a month down the road, is, Mr. Seaman said one solution would be to get the board's approval to accept the lowest bid out of the three that we received.
According to our, to touch.
And then subject, subject to the attorney's approval, once that is, once that's submitted, I'll submit that to Mr. Seaman and he can take a look at whatever it is. The jeopardy that we have is, I might lose my whole server if the power goes out, and again, we have no radio communications or telephone communications whatsoever.
Let me make that motion.
Second.
Any questions?
Funding from H97.
H97. It's, it's not, out of, without replacing a whole generator, I don't think we can use that many money.
Jackie said, and I did talk briefly with Jackie about, she said it's pretty much the same place anyway. The H97 with the night light.
H97 is for safety.
Oh, safety. Yes, for night light.
There's, there's a couple of different funds that it might be. You don't have to specify what's funded, you're going to take it from, it's possible that the hydro allocation fund would be appropriate for it, we'd have to look at that.
Because it's.
Because it's in energy costs, so that's a possibility.
That's true.
Yeah. So, for tonight, the, the dollar figures we're talking about is not a bid scenario, it's less than a bid, so you just require to get some proposals. So, what you'd be doing is authorizing him to accept the lowest proposal after he gets the requisite amount under the permanent policy.
Okay. So, your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Thank you, Chief. Recreation, fund allocation, Muriel. We did that, didn't we, with the?
We did, too, and that was one of the budget divisions that.
Okay. Okay. Privilege of the floor, public concerns, nobody signed up?
Can you say it's second, please?
Pardon?
Can that, have a chance?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. We received a letter from National Fuel, Bob, this is probably more to you, in regards to, they want to know if we have any improvements coming within the town, they would like to know about it. We'll communicate to them about our, our water project.
Have you seen that letter?
I just hit the same one.
You got it?
Got the same.
Okay.
I read it through a couple of times, just wasn't really clear who's supposed to notify them. And sometimes these things get lost.
Well, I'm in your light race, and I'll just, just an attempt at quoting.
And, before you talk about upcoming meetings, Jerry, are you going to meet tomorrow night?
Yes.
Do you have the other items on the agenda?
Yes.
Seven o'clock, Jerry?
Yes.
Mr. Vax will be there. He'll unlock the door and attend the fashion for you.
Okay. So, privilege of the floor, public concerns. Go ahead. No, no, go ahead, different side.
I don't think I have enough time to go through all of the omissions and report that you just heard, but I have two basic concerns. The quality of the sampling that was done. There was no sampling and analysis plan despite the fact that I asked Mr. Broderick at the Greenway meeting back in September three times if there would be a sampling and analysis plan prepared before sampling was conducted. The other concern I have is what seems to be omission or concealment of information from the board, from the public, from the Greenway Commission, even from the DEC, every step of the way on this project. And again, I don't have time to go into detail tonight, but in light of Mr. Guyven's comment two weeks ago that we're talking about cell that came out of the river in the 1970s, this Cribble report indicted the sampling that was done at the time that Kathy reviewed with you. Today's DEC indicted that sampling because the way it was collected and the analysis of that sampling was limited because of the expense at that time. But let me read you from that 1978 Cribble report, which I sent Mr. Lannon and the board on June 4th, and which Kathy fought to summarize. Quote, "It appears that chemical solutions were illegally dumped into this structure over a period of time, and because of the relative low velocity of liquid passing through these large pipes, that the material settled out in the two to 60-inch pipe rather than be carried into the river. Based on our present knowledge, the point at which the chemicals were introduced into the outfall structure can't be determined. The illegal dumping could have originated at the intake well, pump building, along the 42-inch line, or at the old ordinance works, which is now the site of SCA, formerly Chemtrol, of course, now known as CWM. Using the proposed schemes for additional testing, it is anticipated that the extent of the contamination can be more closely identified." I totally agree that a, that before spending another dime, and it looks as if, that all already $35,000 in public money has been invested, we never got a sampling and analysis plan. This characterization, characterization report doesn't even comply with DEC regulation as to the due diligence. And if we get more sampling in areas that Mr. Muriel and Mr. Jacoby propose, given the way the sampling was conducted, you're still going to get sampling that either doesn't characterize the contamination or is diluted. Therefore, before spending another dime, I think Mr. Seaman's remarks of caution were very wise. Let's stop, let's figure out what the next step should be, whether or not the town should even invest more money and find something that could be very expensive to clean up or could be, because once you find it, you can't just say, we're, well, we're going to leave it alone and, and turn away and not do our part. You're going to have the liability if you do sampling that does in fact trigger any sort of brownfields requirements in the state. So, I'm all in favor of doing the characterization. If you want to spend the money, it would be great to clean up that site if there's a problem. It would be great to find out if there's not a problem. But I have zero confidence, and I'll leave it up to the environmental commission to weigh in. I have zero confidence in a characterization report that did not comply with the standards you use before you even get the test results, and then ask the same firm that's telling you this site is safe and appropriate to go back and do some more. I would ask the, the board to perhaps consider having an independent firm that specializes solely in brownfield sites, or at least find some agency that will look at a sampling and analysis plan for you and determine whether or not it fully characterizes the site. Because all of the Part 375 requirements that have been quoted to you are for remediation of sites that have been fully characterized, and certainly, what was done here does not fully characterize the contamination. Any reasonable person can go to that site, look at the size of that berm, see how much larger it is than the permit construction footprint that was overlaid in the GHD report, and say, my gosh, virtually the entire park is going to be atop this burial. and say, my gosh, virtually the entire park is going to be atop this burial. Don't, Cryboll wanted to know in 1980, what's down there, it should be fully characterized, it never was. And you have to decide with your counsel or experienced brownfield counsel whether you even wanna go any further, whether it's worth it. Two boards before you in the past 20 years decided, no, they thought it was too much risk to the town. In any case, I, I look forward to going through the report in more detail. There are many, many questions and flaws in the report, and the detections that were conveyed to you tonight belie the report, there were many, many more detections in the actual report that was given to you. And unfortunately, even though the supervisor sent it to the DEC on January 25th, and with a cover letter that copied the board, I didn't see the board get a copy of this report until two weeks ago, when this presentation was initially supposed to take place. Last but not least, the permit documents that were finally retrieved from DEC some, in October, after two rounds of sampling had been conducted, not before, certainly showed that the burial was very consistent with Mr. Sutton's recollection. So, whether or not he was there during the construction, it was in fact on the south side of the property, in the flat part of the property, a little closer to the river than it, it was to the road. So, I would also caution the board that any hearsay, if not very carefully accompanied in writing from the DEC, or the Department of Health, and the Department of Health, I would encourage you to get that. And also, the letter that Mr. Lannan read you, it was based, it was a comment from DEC only on the data that they looked at. Not whether or not it fully characterized the lagoons, not whether or not the protocol was appropriate, not whether or not composite samplings would dilute the detections that you were looking at and measuring against those standards. So, I'll stop here because, just to talk about that report, and all of the items and all of the questions would take a good hour, and that's a good reason to send it through a committee that looks at sampling and analysis plans, as Mr. Allen and Mr. Wolfgang have over many years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfgang.
I'm gonna tack on to Amy.
Go, go ahead, because my, I have a different subject.
Did you get the report?
No, no, we got it. The report was sent to us via the internet. We're gonna see it tomorrow night in the early.
Okay, I'll have to do it this way.
You want to just put it down?
Nah, it's okay, they did this to me all the time.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks, Drew. Mine isn't as... Well done, Amy. Mine's kind of simplistic here. Mr. Wolfgang, how long have you been discussing this issue?
About five months.
Five months. In five months, we couldn't make, we couldn't plan a meeting for Mr. Mr. Lannan to attend the Environmental Commission, to answer their questions. I find that hard to believe. Now, I just asked Mr. Wolfgang as I walked up here, he had a copy of the report. He said he got the report.
Via the internet, who sent a copy to us.
Just recently.
Email, the email.
Email, ask me.
Just recently. Because it's on the website now.
Right.
And I thank you for that, when I asked you to put that on. The seeker's not up there.